Thank you. Thanks for keeping it straight.
Big thing on here.
Agenda item number eight is Resolution 2022 to be determined. This is a resolution to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Poulsen, Montana, certain tracts and parcels of land described hereafter. The Confederate Salishen Coopie tribes being the primary beneficiary of this property situated north of Poulsen Airport, the west side of Highway, US Highway 93. It discusses it from pages nineteen to seventy-five in your agenda packet, and I'll now hand the meeting over to the City Manager Meeks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna step over here just to be sure that I'm well heard by the room, so sometimes that doesn't happen right there, and I'm trying to keep my eyes on the waiting room as well. So, thank you again for your attention. As the City Commission is aware, in May of last year, we had a conversation with the CSKT and S&amp;K Gaming with regard to their interest in having a seventy-nine acre parcel of land directly north of city land at the airport, annexed into the city limits of the city of Poulsen. We, the form of annexation that CSKT chose, is annexation of continuous government land. That process calls out a public hearing and public comment process. We went through that process, the notifications in the newspapers, we took public comments. We had a public hearing in July, early in that evening, and then later in the evening it was a discussion at a regular City Commission meeting. At that time, due to several issues, the City Commission tabled any action on this annexation request. They gave some specific items of direction to the staff as to what should be brought back, and we have been engaged in that effort with the CSKT and with S&amp;K Gaming since that time. So this evening, what we have is a renewal of that request, continuation of that request, if you will, for annexation into the city of Poulsen. I think there's a couple of things to mention just about that. So, first item is that, as they exist within treaty and law of the United States, the CSKT is not required to request annexation into our community as a prerequisite for their development. They made that request after subsequent partnership discussions with the city of Poulsen, and they also agreed as part of that request that they would enter into a waiver of special improvement district with the city of Poulsen, which is a standard tool that we do with any of our annexations. It basically allows the city to more effectively create special improvement districts post-annexation if there are some reasons for that to occur. So on both of those issues, the CSKT and S&amp;K Gaming have partnered with the city for the purpose of setting aside or cooperating on some issues of sovereignty and jurisdiction. And for that, the administration is very grateful. I think it has allowed us to move forward in a very positive sense. I would also tell you, I mean, I guess I'm speaking to the room on this part, not so much the City Commission, but this administration enjoys the multiple partnerships that we have with the CSKT. We have very positive partnerships in our public safety, police, and fire departments. We also have a member, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority currently sits on our Impact Advisory Committee. We had a member from the CSKT tribal health who sat on our Marijuana Advisory Committee when we drafted that ordinance, and I think it's fair to say that we look for opportunities to involve each other in what we do at an operation on a policy basis. So, I'm just, I'm very appreciative of the relationships that we have with the CSKT. At that last meeting, there were several items of interest that the Commission raised issue for and with. What we have done tonight is provided a packet and update, if you will, of those items. I think what I'd like to do is just, I'll walk through those items with a couple of comments of update, and then when we get through that, if the Commission has any questions, and when we get through that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize Ms. Camel, Economic Development Director for the CSKT, and I think Mr. Hanson as well, so.
You couldn't get closer to the mic, too?
No.
No, I'm not here.
It shouldn't be the mic, we're using the owl, and the owl should be, yeah, this is not going to the other one.
You might have to go outside.
Yeah, no.
Let me see what's going on, Mr. Mayor. Okay? Let's take another lap during recess.
Sorry, it didn't work for you?
Okay, here we go again. Fire alarm goes off, everybody, you know.
I go first.
No stamp, no stamp, keep on the way out of here. Yeah.
Look out for your kid on the way out. Fire alarm goes off.
Fire trucks are close, so you can't really see, all right? So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sure, first question, continue.
I think this, I agree, I think this is a better way to do it rather than just try and make, I'm not sure if we're at the cell problems tonight, or if we're at broadband problems or what.
Perfect, thank you.
So, again, we have enjoyed a good partnership, continue with the CSKT. It has been a work in progress since check last July. As a result of that, we put together a packet for this evening, and I want to just kind of go through a few of those points and make some comments, and then I'm gonna ask Ms. Camel, who is the Economic Development Director for the CSKT, to also add some comments, and I think Mr. Hanson as well from S&amp;K Gaming. When that is complete, we'll certainly stand for questions while the City Commission. So, if we're ready, I'm just gonna dive into this. What you have in front of you this evening to begin with in the packet is Resolution 2023 to be determined. This is an annexation resolution, as the Commission is aware, we do annexation by resolution. It shows you a copy of the map and the subject property with which we are dealing with tonight. It also sets out the legal descriptions and calls out certain supporting documents like growth, our 2016 growth policy, and other items that the administration believes are in support of this annexation request. At the last meeting, we, we had some discussion with regard to an environmental assessment that was submitted by the CSKT to the Bureau of Indian Affairs. However, that item was not in your packet, that is an oversight on our part at the city of Poulsen, and so that item is in your packet this evening. It is a complete copy of the Economic Development Project Environmental Assessment. I'm not gonna go through it blow-by-blow this evening, but I will say that you will find, right up front in that document, you will find a letter that states finding of no significant impact. It is signed by the Regional Administrator, Bureau of Indian Affairs, Shanna Radford. So I know this had been an item of concern that the City Commission had that meeting and wanted to review. That's why you will find it in your packet. Several of the items in that report, or at least one of those, will be referenced in just a moment when we're talking about the conceptual plan for this project. So that would be Appendix A of your packet. Appendix B, this comes to play with regard to the conversation that we had at our last meeting in circle of transportation issues involved with this project. After the City Commission voted to table the project almost immediately with the assistance of State Representative Linda Rexton, we had, with her help, we had DOT visit the city of Poulsen. We had a meeting in this room that we had representatives of the city, the City Commission, the administration, county government, MDOT, Tribal Council, and administration of the CSKT. And we had a rather robust conversation for a couple of hours about transportation issues with regard to Highway 93, what it would take to begin to get Highway 93-type projects into the state budget. And as we discussed that day and back in July of last year, the state of Montana has a rolling transportation plan. The city of Poulsen is not in that plan for at least the next five to ten years, so, and that is a legislative document, so it is at, in our best interest and partnership that we created that day to continue to work to move some of those projects forward. Which then leads us to Appendix C of your packet. Appendix C contains a letter from August of 2022 that reflects the fact that S&amp;K Gaming had committed to perform a traffic impact study with regard to this piece of property and its access to Urban Flats Road and Highway 93. Immediately after that, you find a very similar letter from S&amp;K Gaming dated July the 28th of 2023, as well as a copy of their traffic impact study. That study was completed by KLJ Engineering, I believe, out of Kalispell. They have several locations around the state of Montana, a firm that I'm very familiar with and has done work for me in other locations. You have a full copy of the traffic impact study as relates to your packet. I would just skip over, you know, it's like reading the last page of a good mystery, but the result of this, the result of this study is a recommendation from KLJ for the addition of turning lanes and the consideration of a traffic control signal on Highway 93. This report has been forwarded to the Montana Department of Transportation. I have confirmation of that in writing that I received, I think, in the meeting yesterday, and so it's now in their hands to perform an analysis. Do they agree or disagree with the data, the conclusions, and where it would go from here? And so we're in the waiting phase on that particular piece of work. Further in the packet before you this evening, Appendix D, this is an issue that was discussed at our last meeting, and myself and City Attorney Mickey performed additional research with regard to this item to provide the City Commission as much helpful information as possible. So, as we discussed last year, as we just, or as I just alluded to a few minutes ago, this is tribal, we own property. They did not have to request annexation. They were very interested, though, and continue to be interested, in being a utility customer for the city of Poulsen, and our policy is that utility customers either request annexation or a waiver of annexation, which will allow us to bring them in at our convenience. That being said, there was considerable discussion about leverage, maybe that's the way to put it, that perhaps the city would use our ability to provide or possibly not provide municipal utilities in exchange for other conditions of the annexation. What Mr. Mickey found in his research, both independent and also with some items that were provided by the CSKT, is that there is actually a Supreme Court of Montana case that bears the name Poulsen versus Public Service Commission, and it is a case that basically involved an establishment outside the city limits of Poulsen, I believe it's 1970. The city declined to provide utility service to that business, although it was outside the city limits, it was within our utility service area as determined and accepted by the Public Service Commission. As a result of that, the, I think it was the bar, filed a suit. That suit went all the way to the Montana Supreme Court, the Montana Supreme Court ruled that there were certain circumstances at play, and that although cities could require annexation, I'm sorry, that's, that's been subsequent to the city's. They could not deny service within their, within their service boundaries. So exactly how that would apply to this case if the city were to not approve annexation but still deny a utility service would likely be decided by some form of litigation. At this point, you'll notice that Mr. Mickey's answer at the top of page, I don't know what page number it is here, is maybe, that's question number two. And in all fairness to Mr. Mickey, I think that's because we're just in a place where it's, it's hard to say certain. But what we can tell, you wanted the City Commission to know, is it's not a black and white issue as to whether, even if we were to not approve annexations, we could decline to provide. From the administration's point of view, we feel like that both the annexation, coupled with the new facilities, becoming utility customers, just deepens the partnership that we already have with the CSKT, and it allows us to interact on a more frequent and meaningful basis with regard to this potential development. So that is part of what is in the packet this evening. Those two, those two letters are Appendix D. Appendix E, one of the issues that we discussed, both, I believe, both in May and then later on in July, was the possibility of a PILT agreement. So the city of Poulsen currently has a PILT agreement with the Tautik Resort, well, with S&amp;K Gaming for the Tautik Resort. We also have PILT agreements with the Housing Authority, S&amp;K Housing Authority, for the units that they have with inside the city. It is something that we are familiar with and we have partnered with in the past. Yes, ma'am?
Can you explain what PILT is?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I saw something go on over there and it was, yes, PILT, Payment in lieu of Taxes, is what PILT stands for. So this is a mechanism that's frequently used, I just said, CSKT has used it, federal government will use it, county government, sometimes the city governments, if they own property within that jurisdiction, they will make a payment, since they're not paying property taxes, they will make another payment based on some type of a formula that is there to at least help meet the cost of public services from which they are benefiting. And so thank you, Commissioner Partee. So, what you have in your packet tonight is a memo from me dated January 10th. This is the template that we have discussed as to what a PILT agreement would look like. We don't have a completed PILT agreement for you. That would be something that as part of our conversations that gone, would occur after annexation at that time of the development of the casino project, and then as subsequent facilities became available, we would, the goal would be to write this agreement so that it can be easily expanded for other types of facilities and potentially be a template for other PILT agreements if necessary, other spots within the community. The idea behind the template that we have here would be to create a PILT agreement that is very, very similar to how we currently do property taxes. It basically lays out a system where we would have the property regularly appraised, and then it would go through, we would go through a payment process very similar to how we appraise properties and issue millwinds at this time. The purpose of doing that is to make sure that everybody's getting treated the same, we're putting everybody on the same playing field, and there's no objections one way or the other. So that would be Appendix E in your packet, and then Appendix F is a, I'm sorry, this screen gets so crowded. It is a enlargement of a document that you find inside the environmental assessment, and I'm sure Ms. Camel will allude to in a minute, but it basically sets out sort of a loose conceptual plan for this property. I don't think anything here has been set in stone beside the casino. So, a couple of issues with regard to the casino development on this piece of property. First up, I want to talk about water. We just talked about water restrictions, and I know that there's certainly a talk for some folks probably, well, how can you do water restrictions, and then a week later you want to talk about doing a casino development? Now, as I said earlier, the water restrictions that we imposed recently weren't because we were in a water crisis. We are absolutely gonna turn on well number eight by the 15th of August. We were waiting on one little part, that part has arrived, and so we're in the final stages of that. That will give us another 650 gallons per minute to feed our clearwater tanks. So, at the moment, I feel very confident in our water supply. We had a mechanical issue a couple of years ago that really threw us back in the middle of the summer, but we did impose the restrictions because it was, it's a good way to start to manage our water resources. Recently, I asked the utility department to print a report of all of our users over 20,000 gallons a month. It's a rather lengthy report, but I think what was most surprising is the number of users that we have on residential properties over 50,000 gallons a month. I'm gonna say, non-multi-family residential properties over 50,000 gallons a month. That's a whole lot of water, probably going on your ass. For us to recover as quickly as we did after imposing the odd even, to me, not being a scientist and an engineer, that was also anecdotal evidence of that fact. That's what we did, the odd even water, to make sure we didn't get into a crisis situation, and I will say, just as a side, probably this fall, the administration's gonna come to the Commission and ask you to consider making odd even watering our normal sum of practice. That way, we can all let the water department sleep a little bit better at night, but we'll save that conversation for a different day. I would also, I know the City Commission knows this, but I'm sure not everybody in the rooms, or, no, we're down to one room now, or one and a half, knows this, but the city does not take any water from the Flathead Lake. All of our water comes from Aquifer Wells, so the water that we draw down for our municipal utility customers does not affect the levels inside the lake. This development, therefore, would not have any additional effect on the heat levels as well. I guess another opportunity to talk, another issue to talk about is transportation. As I mentioned, we have some information in the packet for you. We have some recommendations that the DOT is going to be reviewing and reacting to. I've been in Poulsen since October of 2020, so it's hard for me to go much farther than 10 years, but if I look back at my research in terms of other types of opportunities with DOT, these types of improvements north of the bridge, it's the first time I can determine that something like that has even been proposed and submitted in DOT within at least the last decade. So I'm hopeful that those recommendations will be well received by the DOT, and that gives us the first place, the first starting point to move forward on making some improvements through a partnership, Lake County DOT, city of Poulsen, MDOT, to start to address some of the traffic issues on Highway 93. Our regular semi-annual traffic count, I think when we did that last August, we had 19,000 cars in one day moving on Highway 93. Effectively shuts off any left-hand turning lanes. We do have some stacking on the bridge from time to time. So this is a, this is a, whether there were a development here or not, this is an issue that we need to be dealing with, and I think it's most effectively dealt with through the partnership of those particular agencies. I'm also appreciative to the CSKT and the S&amp;K Gaming. There was a commitment made, a commitment that did made in May, it was repeated in July, that the traffic impact study was gonna be done. That study was done as promised, those results have been delivered, and again, they're, they're at the DOT at this time for further reaction. So I think at this point, everybody's more than tired of hearing from me, so I'm gonna ask Janet Camel, Economic Development Director, to come to the podium, and then, and then Mr. Hanson after that.
Real quick, before you step down, I had a question for you, if you may help.
Sure.
So, we talked about the bridge- So, we talked about the bridge and everything. Last time I was aware of the bridge, the bridge is not constructed currently to be of a whole traffic at a standstill, correct?
So, can I answer that question?
Yes, sir.
So, let me, let me address that question, right? I do not think that's an accurate statement. And I'm going to tell you what, that bridge currently holds traffic. If the UDOT team believed that that bridge was somehow designed in such a way where its design was faulty, they could not hold traffic at a standstill, they should close that bridge. There is, there is no plan that DOT has made myself, or as far as I know, county government, that they plan to close that bridge. I do, you know, I'm not aware of any existing safety hazards we have for that bridge, because traffic sits still on it. If there are, and DOT has not made us aware of them, then shame on DOT. I would also say, this particular annexation is northern, so it has an opportunity to capture some traffic that is coming just to this location and keep it north. And one of the things that I have heard in previous conversations with Mr. Miller is the number of folks that come down from Canada. So I, I just don't, I do not believe Commissioner Isbell that that is an actual statement of concern. If it was, the DOT should have forced the bridge back down. I guess, what other questions?
Yep, so, saying the annexation goes through tonight, everything looks solid up and up. Recommendations of this, of the turning lanes and everything, I was looking, you know, I had no issues with that. When, you know, with the building, the way that this is currently done, would the building be able to start before those improvements are made, or are we halted until those improvements are in place? I don't, because right now, it's at the state. They're going to approve it or disapprove, whatever they're going to do. So, what if, if we annexes in, what do they do?
Corey, could you speak louder? We can't hear.
I'll try.
Thank you.
So, with, this isn't a name recognition.
It just records.
So with, with the, with that study that is in place, that they've recommended, like I said, I have no issues with that study. That looks, that looks good, okay? So, with that being said, would they be permitted to start building, the building process? Would they be able to start putting that infrastructure in place before that road infrastructure was there, since we are wait now at the state level? I don't know how that, if you can explain to me how that works.
So, it's a good question. So, the, because of their, because of their governmental status, the CSKT will not be in need of zoning permits or building permits or anything like that, right? They will have to install quite a bit of infrastructure, water and sewer and other items to make that, that development go forward, right? So I would, I'm not an attorney, I just play one on television, but I will certainly follow up with the DOT. I would think the way it would work is that they could, they could install their utility infrastructure, but they're not going to have access permits until the improvements that DOT wishes to require are satisfied. But I'll, I'll double check that with the DOT.
Okay. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big deal, because if we have open doors and that isn't in place yet, that would be a pretty big deal. That's why, it's a pretty big question.
Except for the fact that, again, the CSKT could do this development without annexation, and it's still going to come down to their relationship with the DOT as to when those improvements come in. And I certainly understand, and that would be our, our desire, and I'm sure that would be the desire of SMK Gaming, they, they have to be able to get their customers in and out safely as well.
Absolutely.
So perhaps when you come up, Daniel, and you can address that a little bit. Anything else, Commissioner?
So, this packet that, that we are presented with tonight, with all, I don't know, 50-something pages of this annexation, that they had all the information together, and I'm happy with the information that we have. Has there been any changes since July when we were going to have this on the meeting?
Changes like what?
To this packet?
Well, yes. So, we provided updated information with regard to the transportation study.
Okay.
I don't recall if you had the PILT template in the last packet or not, but that, that's in the packet. And you certainly did not have the environmental assessment in the last packet, so that's, that's new for this evening.
Those were the things we asked for.
Those were all things you asked.
Yes.
And the reason subsequently that we tabled it was to get this information in the packet, and now it's in the packet. Is that correct?
That's, yes.
I'll clarify what I've, what I've said about it. It's, I wish we would have had this information when we got it, talking last month. I think we had this information, because only having this for a few days instead of the timeframe that the city was sitting on it before I gave it to the commissioners. That's what I was upset about, not necessarily the information that they've provided. I think they've done a really good job with the packet that they've provided.
So you mean like if we just got the agenda a few days ago, and it's a lot of stuff to read?
Yes. This was scheduled July 3rd, and we pushed it back.
Yep.
That information should have been in our hands at that time, from our city, not from, not from CSKT.
I, that's a valid, I mean, I guess I could have come in and asked for it, and I didn't. Well, I couldn't have, but, but it is a lot. I have that problem sometimes with the agenda, and I understand why we waited until Thursday to put the agenda out, but sometimes it is a lot of stuff to read and think about and re-again.
This is, yes.
This is a lot, I mean, environmental impact statement is a lot to read and, so I hear what you're saying, Charlie.
And, and you're, I respect it, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. We sent the environmental assessment report out two days after the last meeting. It came out to the entire city commission via email.
Understood.
The traffic study information we received on Tuesday of last week, Monday of last week, so that was included in the packet when we sent the packet out on Wednesday. The, the issue with the, with the court case, fair, obviously it's a fair comment, there have been a lot of moving pieces to this, but, you know, if you felt like you should have had it earlier, certainly, I understand that. Anything else, or how about we move on to Janet? No. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. I brought my maps that I presented a couple of years ago, actually, to the planning office, the city planning office, and, and then I presented them to you last year. Let's see. So, you see on the screen here the same thing that I'm showing you here. And what we did, the tribes, oh gosh, must have been three years ago now, we looked at this vacant property that the tribes have had for several years, and we looked at the adjacent land uses, we looked at the KOA campground, we looked at the high-end RV park, we looked at the commercial development across the highway, we looked at the zoning that the city of Poulsen has for this area, and we felt that these uses would be compatible. So we're looking at some RV spaces, some commercial lots, and some residential lots, because housing is, as you know, very expensive now, and we're trying to provide more affordable housing for people who live here. And, so what we did is we just came up with a conceptual problem. What could we do potentially? Now, after we've talked with the city about water capacity and sewer capacity, we thought that it would be best if we just start with one project, look at annexing the property, but just start with one project, because we can't really develop the rest of this property until we know we can hook up to city sewer and water. We can't really determine how many lots we're going to develop until we understand more about the capacity. So, we want to hire an engineer to look at these other options, but in the interim, we want to start with just the first phase, and that is the commercial lease to SMK Gaming. Now, originally, we looked at, let's see, six acres. SMK Gaming wanted to include a little bit more space in case they develop a hotel or an event center. But, so we, our initial lease now will be 10 acres to SMK Gaming. That'll include this parking area, that'll also include potentially a visitor center if we get enough funding to build a small visitor center for Poulsen and the reservation. And we'd like tourists to understand what, you know, what they're going to be able to see here, and where we could capture some of those dollars from the tourists that are coming here to visit. And we want them to understand, you know, all of the different amenities that are in this area, and so we think that that's, that's really a good spot for a visitor center. Now, we completed the environmental assessment, and that environmental assessment, you know, we look at federal laws such as, you know, the, uh, uh, sorry, Threatening Endangered Species Act, we look at impacts to cultural resources, we look at that impacts to water quality, air quality, multiple issues, and we found that there potentially could be traffic issues, and if there were, we would do a traffic impact study. And that's essentially what the environmental assessment tells you. We, like I said, we met initially with the city of Poulsen two years ago, and then we were advised to apply for annexation. So we did that, we've been going through the steps, we were here last year to present the project again, and again, just phase one, and that's SMK Gaming. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that. We're not asking for hookup for all of these homesite lots or RV park lots, we're just asking for one commercial development at this point, because we don't want to take water away from the citizens of Poulsen, we don't want to take away from sewer capacity. But the tribes also agreed to sign, now you're going to tell me what the word.
A waiver of SID.
Yeah, the waiver to protest an SID. So that means if an SID is formed to improve RV flats, roads, or anything else in that area, that infrastructure, the tribes will be part of it and pay their fair share. So that's really important for people to understand. And I've worked for the tribes 34 years, and they are honest, honorable people, and I really hope to understand that what we're doing here, we're telling you everything that's on the table. We're, we're being honest and open. And so, I don't know if you have any other questions, but I think it's important to look at adjacent land uses, capacity of the system, and again, we could build, we could put in our own well, and we could put in our own sewage treatment system if we need to, but we'd rather work with the city of Poulsen, because we're already sharing other types of infrastructure. We're sharing police protection, fire protection, those are important things where we need to partner. Given this fire season this year, it's critical that we all work together. And again, we don't want to take anything away from anyone else, we just want the opportunity to develop tribal property in a way that the tribes feel is appropriate, and in a way that the city also agrees to. So, that's what I had to say, and Dan, did you want to add to that?
If I may first, you ask questions? Uh, no, can't ask a question, ever?
No, no questions from the public at this time.
Okay.
I'll be here, though.
I have a few comments. So, SMK, because I've heard a few things about this project, and I apologize that I wasn't here last year for the other meeting, my predecessor Brian Miller was part of that, and then I stepped in in January, and had to catch up on the project and everything else.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, my name's Daniel Hanson, I'm the CEO of SMK Gaming, I'm, sorry. And some of the things I've heard about it, so we're not actually adding a second casino to Poulsen, we're moving the casino we have now out of the resort. And one of our reasons we want to do that is really to allow the resort to focus on resort, family-friendly type things, you know, really focus on things that we do, like the rodeo, Rockin' the docks, where it brings people into the area, the Flat River Rodeo is coming up, there's one INFR six times in a row, it's getting us onto both the Cowboy Channel and the Rodeo Channel. It's really, gets Poulsen in the spotlight, and that's something we want to be able to focus on at the resort. Moving the casino just outside of, around the outskirts of town, is my trouble? Oh, sorry, just on the outskirts of town will allow us to actually focus that as a casino business. As I'm sure a lot of you who've been in Protokna know, that building wasn't really built to be a casino with modern buildings, you know, can be much more spoke free, can be much more safe and better kind of establishment. Yeah, we're really trying to focus on that, and to benefit both us and Poulsen to really build the community. I know, like I said earlier, there have been some questions about this project, potential impacts on the city of Poulsen. In listening to the conversation, I went back and listened to the city ones last year, I listened to the people who took part in it, and really kind of focused on traffic, water, environment, the PILT, and economic impacts. I know that water and the environment was already covered, just to mention, or to discuss the traffic for a moment. It was promised that we would do the traffic impact study, we did that, we're now working with the Montana Department of Transportation. I myself am not an engineer or a traffic engineer, that's not something I'm an expert in, so I'm really relying on both KLJ, who's our consultants, and the Montana Department of Transportation. We're fully committed to moving forward with their recommendations, and also to make sure that, I mean, we don't want to create an unsafe situation that's going to both endanger the community, but also our guests. One good thing that will come out of it is that the traffic going to Protokna now will be reduced significantly as it goes to resort and hotel drivers only and not casino and bar goers. Yes, we'll be moving that traffic out of town, though, but it will at least cut it back there in downtown, hopefully helping to make downtown at least partially more walkable and drivable. I mean, I come out of KTN three days a week, and if it would have gotten that part of the lot, I would have, to know as many people are doing it now, I mean, Poulsen, we all just know it's traffic, and we are fully committed to do our part in that. Water, I know you guys already covered, the environmental impact was already pretty much covered, the payment in lieu of taxes, just to kind of touch on that for a moment. Beyond the indirect impacts, or economic impacts that we have on Poulsen, looking from 2014 to 2021, we have steadily increased what we pay every year, both in PILT and in direct donations just in the city of Poulsen, but over that space has averaged about $37,500 annually as PILT, and about $53,600 in donations to things within the city. That totals about $774,000 from 2014, and we've given directly to the city about $2 million since we opened. We will, of course, continue to give each year without fail, and we do this voluntarily because we want to be good neighbors, we want to continue to pull our own weight. We want to make sure that Poulsen has a bright future for all of its residents and our guests, and on top of this, we pay, you know, our water, our sewer, our power, utilities, we also focus on local businesses to make sure that we're trying to buy local and really support the economy in that way. And then, of course, paying our employees and handling labor, which are more indirect economic impact than they still are. The goal really for SMK, like I said, is to be good neighbors overall, whether it's with traffic, whether it's with the economy, whether it's with the PILT, whatever we can do, that's what we're trying to do, and it's something that we've really committed to and focused on in the past, both here in Greewell and in Big Arm. We really want to make sure that we're mitigating any potential negative impacts we have on the communities that we're in, and really try to emphasize and maximize our positive impacts for everybody. I mean, a rising lake raises all boats, I think that's something that we can all, you know, appreciate at this time of year. And we have a history of working with everybody. And we have a history of working with everybody, and as you said, trying to make sure that we're benefiting everybody. And we're really committed to continue that trend moving forward to Poulsen. If you have any questions or thoughts, I know I kind of ran along for a minute, so I think you did good.
Is there anybody else here from the tribe that wants to make comments for the presenting party? I think that's a little different than public comment if, you know, it's somebody from the presenting party, but they're more than willing to speak now as we're gathering questions and comments from the commission.
Yeah, I think so.
Go ahead, please state your name.
Thank you. I am Vlad Tuti. I am currently serving as the Vice Chairman of the Tribal Council. Mr. Mayor, distinguished City Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, I want to thank you all for this opportunity to allow us to present our case here. As Janet and Dan mentioned, we are very optimistic about wanting to collaborate with the City of Poulsen, not only on this project, but on future projects. And we think we have... The tribes have a lot to bring to the table to serve our constituents. We all have people that we work for, that we need to abide by. And but I just want to make this statement very brief, and once again, thank you for allowing us to do this.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Troy Feldman. I'm on the board of S&amp;K Gaming, a tribal member as well. One of the things that I wanted to bring up that really has to touch on is, on the land, all valid reasons, you know, of what we're trying to do, we're trying to work and partner with, continue to partner with the City of Poulsen. One of the things that...